Full screen. Okay. And our microphone's on, right? Yeah. I will call this regular meeting of the Public Site and Building Commission to order at seven oh, is it seven? Seven oh one. Please join me in the pledge. Pledge allegiance. Thank you, everyone. Okay. No public input because there's no public here. Correspondence, nothing other than what was already sent out ahead of time. Collection of officers. So Dave Horvath emailed just a little while ago saying he won't be here. Questioned everybody else, do we want to wait until everybody's like here and do it then? Do we want to do it now and? Any input on any ideas, any?
Well, we could wait till we have any. I want to do it and find out if he had an interest.
Yeah, did Dave have an interest, I guess?
I don't think he does.
Well, or we don't want to nominate him and elect him.
Yeah, I mean, I just don't know.
Yeah, we should probably wait.
Yeah.
I didn't have much of a, I just kind of texted him earlier and said, hope you're going to be on the meeting when I elect officers.
I guess it's up to Nancy too. I know you're looking to kind of, you know, kind of step on the roll. She's delaying that. That's all I don't want.
Yeah, I mean, so you know, try to see if we can make sure.
I mean, I'm trying to wait till they.
Yeah, our next meeting would be July twenty something, second or.
Oh, I don't see twenty.
Twenty-three.
Twenty-eight?
Twenty-three. So I don't know if anybody's going to be away and you have any ideas? I don't know, Tom or Dave Olson. David Olson, when's the next time you're going to Maine?
I'll be around for the next meeting.
Okay, good. And you guys will.
Yeah, I should be ready.
I'm looking at my calendars.
Says audio is causing, are you getting feedback? No, it said it's causing feedback. We just got a message on the screen, but if it sounds okay, then. We're good? Okay. All right, so we'll wait. All right, but that, I know we need to kind of move along, but it'd be good to have everybody here. All right, so approval of meeting minutes. So we'll just keep Kathy, keep that on the agenda for now. I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes from the regular meeting of June twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five. Second, Roger seconds, Roger seconds, sorry. But. Does anybody have any checked over the minutes? Anything needs to be changed, corrected, updated? I think we're good. Yep. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, opposed and anybody have to abstain? I don't think anybody. I think we were all here last time. Except for Horvath, who's not here. Okay, good. So let's get into the old business, a little rearranging of the agenda again this time with the high school HVAC. First, so Rick. What's happening?
All right. Few things going on. At this meeting. So on the third floor, the duct work is predominantly complete from what I'm told, and they're working on the second floor. All but three of the ventilators have been removed, so they're on schedule with that. But with those three ventilators, we do have some issues in the floor that we're addressing. Color Ronin has an RFI in regard to what to do with. With some of the conduit and wiring that's coming up outside of where the new, the. We need to remediate the wires. So there may be something where we have to cut the floor a little bit and put a junction box in to make that work, but we're waiting on a response from Color Ronin. This just came up in the last couple of days. To do that. Control wires are being pulled throughout the, throughout the area. I guess there was some damaged cable that was, data cable that was discovered when we opened up a. Wire mold. Now, this wasn't something that was damaged by the project or even included in the project, but it was noted. It was brought to Tyler's attention as well as IT's attention, and they're thinking that it was probably damage done by, by mice or rodents or something along those lines. So we're currently working on a directive with that to see, you know, how we're going to tackle this, this issue. These data cables evidently go up into the third floor computer room. And Tyler, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe it affects approximately ten, ten computers in the computer lab.
That's what IT has identified based on the wiring that the project identified being damaged.
Right. So we're moving forward. It doesn't, doesn't affect the HVAC project, but it's something that will need to be addressed either by the school or someone elected to put it into the project to do that. But, you know, we don't know about budget issues at this point, what that will take to, to. To make good. So that's just an issue. So IT was on the call with us on yesterday's call with the OIC meeting. So we're kind of talking through that and I believe was it? One of the IT folks was going to head out to site to take a look at a WAP that was wireless access point that was. Also not working. So. We're just on hold for that, waiting for some, some further information.
Actually, he gave me an update on that today. They, they said that it appears the project had just unplugged the wireless access board. It appeared to be in the way of duct work that was in the process of being installed. The assumption is the duct work vendor had unplugged it to gain access to the area he was working.
Were they able to put it back into service or?
IT didn't touch it because it appeared that work was still happening in the area. I need to, I guess either you or I, Rick, need to touch base with Save More and make sure that they're following up their vendors to make sure that stuff is put back if it's being touched.
Yeah, well, thank you. I'll take, I'll take, take that over to Save More. Probably the biggest challenge that we came up against over the past couple of weeks, actually the past week or so, was the electrical panels. So there was a electrical study done and panels that were specified to be used when looking into the lead times of these electrical panels. Some of them, I think there are four different panels, and two of them were over twelve weekly time, which is, you know, pretty, pretty far out in, in relation to this project. So we got Color Ronin involved. And the electrician and Save More, and we were able to come up with alternative panels that would satisfy the project, still keep us at the same number of circuits. The one big difference in that was rather than having circuit breakers, there's a fuse disconnect. So we would, if we had an issue with that, we'd have to replace the fuses. It wouldn't be something where we can just shut the circuit breaker off. Is that your understanding, Tyler?
Yeah, that's correct.
Yeah.
Which I think that cut our lead time in half.
Yeah, cut our lead time in half to about six to seven weeks. We won't know for sure until, they did go ahead and place the order. They did, we won't know for sure on that until everything is processed from the electrical vendor, and we should know by the end of this week. I did speak with Jay from Save More this afternoon and got that information from him. So we're, we're waiting to hear on that, but if that's the case, shouldn't have, shouldn't have an impact to the project schedule. All right. And it was fully vetted by Color Ronin, so. We proceeded to go down that, that road. At this point, we're still waiting, as I mentioned last time, for change order on the soffit work, the masonry in the risers. And then also a credit for the, the platform around the DOAS units. And the platform around the DOAS units, actually all three of these, we should have by Friday or Monday. Jason was out for a week this past week and his masonry vendor was out the week prior to that, so that got held up a bit. And as far as the platform credit for the DOAS, the platform credit for the, around the DOAS units. We did just get a sketch in a, in a formalized present. Document out to Save More to have them. Reprice that. So we're kind of, kind of waiting on that. But my, my, I mean, in looking at those three, my hope would be that the soffit work there would still fall within the allowance. I think we have $2,000 more left in the allowance. And the masonry work would be, would be less than the credit than the platform would be. So right now, in looking at it, we still have a hundred and two, roughly a hundred and $2,000 left in the contingency. And, you know, unless there's, you know, some further, some further change orders, that's pretty much where we stand at this point.
Is there any difference in the cost of those different electrical panels? The breakers versus fuses or anything, or is that roughly the same?
It's roughly, it's roughly the same. It's basically a wash.
I just have a quick question. Rick and Tyler, Roger and Don, so I'm fairly new on the commission here. So when you're doing the HVAC work and you find conduits, wires, some, some IT damage. Is that part of this budget or would that shift over to Tyler for like a maintenance or, or an IT budget item to fix the, the wires, let's just say?
Well, if it's, if it's damage, if it's damage or something that's uncovered, that needs, that needs to be changed because of the project, then it would fall under the project. But something like these dat, these data cables, which, you know, they were just removed because we needed access to a point. They, they were damaged anyway. It wasn't anything to do with the project. So that would be, I think that would be a call that the building committee or the, or the school would make with, you know, how, how they wanted to treat that cost. I don't, I don't even know how much it would be, actually, Tyler. I don't know if, you know, the IT folks have kind of set that and got a, got a dollar figure yet.
No, no, yeah, it's too, too early. They're working on getting their vendor involved to identify scope and cost. But it's, currently it's something that IT is looking at addressing within the Board of Ed budget.
So, so it's not, those damaged wires aren't needed for this project?
No, they're wires that support the data for the classroom functionality, not any part of the project scope.
So I guess it's a good thing you found it before they got worse, I guess.
Yeah.
That was your, you said there's mice damage. Do they have some sort of pest control that takes like, make sure there's not active there anymore?
Maybe we do, but there's no. It appears to be rodent damage to the wires, but it's impossible for us to know when that damage occurred.
Okay, it could have been there years ago.
It's just an unsafe condition at this point.
Yeah, that makes sense to fix it.
No, it has to be fixed. I was just curious how it's billed or anything, but probably the Board of Ed. Thank you.
But because it was discovered as the part of they're doing whatever work they had to do. They, they had to move them or get them out of the way, something like that or?
Around.
Yeah, right now we've just directed them until we have, have a solution for that and how it's going to be addressed is just ask them not to put, put the wire mold back up. And just, just kind of leave it, leave it as is until we can make a determination on the next action.
I have a question. Is there any long-term downside to having a fuse panel versus a breaker panel? Maintenance wise, service wise?
It's a, it's kind of a six of one, half dozen of the other. The downside to fuse disconnect is if there's an issue that causes a fuse to blow and the fuse needs to be replaced. Where if it was a breaker, it would be potentially able to be reset. The upside is that the fuses are a lot cheaper to replace than if and when the breaker fails, because breakers do have a limited life. It, it's usually thousands of trips, but not always. And when they do fail, they're much more expensive. We did also tell them that we expected a full set of replacements for each of the disconnects for the fuses as part of the trade-off.
Yeah, that was my next question. Are you going to get extra fuses at the beginning of the project or at the end of the project?
Yeah, yeah, they, they were advised that, it, it was my instruction. I advised them that I wanted a full set of replacement fuses for each disconnect.
Okay. And maybe a dumb question, but any reason these panels weren't ordered in the beginning of the project?
Well, there was a, a electrical study that took longer than expected because that needed to be conducted. And it actually just came through, I think, in the last couple of weeks. And so as soon as they found that out, they did. Evidently, I don't have all the details, but they kept having to go back for further information for this study, and it took longer than expected. And so that's why it was just uncovered, if you would, in the past. I know it was about a week and a half ago.
Gotcha. Understood.
Yep. Any other questions?
So how are we doing with the schedule?
Schedule, we look good. I, I did, again, Jason came back today. He wasn't at yesterday's meeting. Joey is, is a person on site was, was on it. And so he doesn't see anything right now. They're working in the school to try to work out of the school. So, you know, we're not in the school when the school starts again. So we don't have, they do have the DOAS units in their rickers yard, from what I'm told, but they don't have them on, on the roof yet. But they want to make sure that they get, like I said, out of the school and up on the roof so they can, you know, do that work. At pretty much any point. But, you know, I don't have any, any red flags as far as not hitting their, their target date.
So it does look like they should be out of the schools by the end of August when school starts?
Actually, it's the middle of August, I believe.
Oh.
Right, it's somewhere. I believe if, I don't have the date exactly in front of me, but it's somewhere around the eighteenth.
I think that's when they need to spade back to start getting teachers in and prepping, et cetera. So if they're still on track for that, that's great.
So what's the date for those to go on the roof? Says.
Yes.
I'm sorry?
What was the date for those to go on the roof? The DOAS units, when are they going up?
I don't have a confirmed date yet. They were supposed to be the begin, the first week of July, but that hasn't happened because we are wait, still waiting for the, the structural steel to change, and they're going to be getting that very shortly and getting approval on that. From Color Ronin as well as getting the credit, because that's part of the credit that we're looking for in the, reducing the platforms and lowering the structural steel to make those units a little bit lower.
There's no structural steels gone in yet?
Correct.
Fifteen day project, right? Just for the structural steel?
Ah, correct.
So it's probably going to be a major delay, right? To like the timeframe?
No, it's not, it's not what, it's not what I'm hearing. You know, everything else is moving forward. The electrical is moving forward. All the, you know, the duct work and whatnot is moving forward, so it's just, you know, when they, when they put their schedule together back in, you know, February with those dates, there is a delay, but it, it is on site, so I don't foresee there being a, a large delay to the, to the end of the project.
Can we get an updated schedule with like the actual dates and stuff that we, we've hit and what's actually been going on?
Exactly. And I will have that for our next meeting because I, I have been. I did ask him for that actually last week, but he was on vacation, so we should have that by, by next week, and I'll get it out to, send it out to everybody.
So just a clarification on structural steel. Is that, it's not been put in place? But it's possibly changing depending on whether we have the side discharge or the bottom for the DOAS units?
Yeah, correct. So it's just a minor change in, in the, in the design where we're lowering it, so it's a little bit less of the structural steel.
But they still got to get that work done. So it's still got, so is the design done? Or redoing? But we still have to get figures before they can, or can they just go do the work and then they? If it's going to be a change order, but it's going to be a change order credit, right?
Correct.
We don't want.
We're, we're, yeah, we're not holding the project up because of that. All right.
Sorry. And budget obviously hasn't changed because we haven't had any change orders.
Correct.
Okay.
Has the mason been out to look at the repair or, and you're just waiting on an estimate or?
Yeah, he's actually going to be out Friday.
Okay.
Because of the, I mentioned that the two, he was out for one week and then Jason was out for the other, so it has been delayed.
Okay, sorry, I missed that.
So that, the other, in the soffit work, we're still looking at that. And what that's going to entail as far as whether it fits in the allowance or?
Correct.
But it'll be a change of the path, okay? Anything else, Rick?
No, I think that's sums it up. I don't know, Tyler or Jennifer, you have anything to add?
Nope. I'm all set, thank you.
Well, we have invoices, so if anybody else has questions for Rick, we'll do those. Otherwise, we can do our invoices. Now? Okay. I have to do this thing here. I don't do it enough to remember how to do it. We have the. Slowly.
Just wondering when to look at Thursday.
I'm, I just pulled up the Color Ronin one. Now you have to go back to here and see it.
I actually. Make sure my direction was.
Um, so I sent these out as an attachment to Kathy's. Make this scroll. Okay, so now we get started. So I did send them out as an attachment to, but I have to ask, I said they would probably be in the shared drive, but I was assuming in the other HVAC shared drive that got started before the one that Jack put up. And I wasn't sure if Rick was putting them up there or not. If not, I'll start putting them somewhere.
Which one are you into?
So Color Ronin.
I'm in my email.
I will make a motion that we approve Color Ronin invoice number two, two, zero, two, one, dot, zero, two, dot, zero, one, dash, seven, dated July, or June thirty, twenty twenty-five. For services rendered through the end of June in the amount of $3,662.50. Got a second. Any questions, et cetera? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Done? Okay, and then now I go back over here. I'll do Save More next. Save More actually sent both an invoice and an application for payment, so I just kind of put them both together. And there's, this is the application for payment and I put the invoice along with it, so I will see. I'll make a motion that we approve Save More application for payment number six. Also invoice number one, seven, seven, five, five, dated June twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five in the amount of $349,822.20. Got a second from David Olson, and it's got the all the pages attached. Does anybody have any questions on this? All in favor? Aye. And done with that one, and then we'll do SES. Go, I will make a motion that we approve SES invoice number five, one, nine, eight. For the service period ended June thirty, twenty twenty-five in the amount of $1,720. Zero cents. Checking. From Roger. Does anybody have any questions on this one? Actually, Rick, what's SES been doing? Are they doing some reviews?
They're doing some reviews and they also submitted a field report. And I think, I believe I posted that to the, the website, the observation report.
Okay. So now are you putting it in the shared drive that's the original one that we had started using at the beginning of the project?
I believe so. It's the one that Christine actually gave me permission to use. Yeah, yep.
Okay. So I think we'll just keep putting stuff there and keep using that to access. Like David, you've said you've found budgets and whatever you have, so they're there.
And I've been putting, I've been putting the billing in after they're approved. I've been submitting them, I believe from that before, you know, just to, to submit them to the to the the, the SBC.
Right, okay.
So it's not in the shared, I'm just looking here and I hit that.
Right, so that's, so there's a shared drive that we all were given access to earlier, and that one is the one that, well, I can look at it quickly. The one that Jack made that has all these different projects so that I can put stuff in that I don't want to keep on my computer anymore. But if it's all stuff, those are newer.
Right.
It's Rick, all the stuff that Rick brings to the meeting or is going to bring to a meeting goes into the other one. And, and we'll make sure you get access to it. You want to want to have access to it. Let's get.
Rick, what's that report called?
Yeah, that SES report, you said you put it in the drives.
Yeah, I believe I, it's Commissioning Field Observation Report. I don't.
So it's under commissioning, did you put it under?
Yeah. Correct. Is it in there?
I, I don't.
Yeah, we don't see it on this side.
I don't see it on this side.
I'll, I'll drop it in.
All right.
Yeah, if, if things can be done by, you know, either like if you put, you have a folder for commissioning. Keep putting that stuff in there. If there's folders for each, like different vendors. Budget, maybe that has a folder. That would make it easier to find out stuff.
Okay.
All right, we have one. Yeah, what's that? Go ahead.
Those updated by the, the week.
Okay. And it's not in the other one because you opened that and there's nothing in there. So one more invoice, STV. I'll make a motion that we approve STV invoice number nine, zero, zero, three, four, eight, six, three. Dated July third. And the amount of more than $71.
I see.
Second from David. Any questions on this? As we discussed last meeting, we're just waiting and seeing how this all plays out as STV had spent more time than they had originally put in their proposal for the contract with Save More. So we'll have to, they don't want to do anything with a change order until they get a little more handle on whether they really need to or not. All right, I think that's it for invoices. Oh, no, we didn't vote. All in favor? Done. That's all the invoices for that, and I think that should be it for any other questions or any comments before we, let me get done.
I think I'm all set.
Okay. We get rid of this. We get rid of this. Go back here and stop screen sharing. There's everybody. Alrighty, so thanks. Rick and Jen and Tyler and next meeting we will. Kind of flip again because we won't have invoices and we'll have other stuff first on the agenda. Possibly depending on where we're going with our other projects.
And it should have at least those three change orders and and depending on what happens with the other.
Yeah.
You know, maybe a fourth, but I'll have everything buttoned up by then.
Yeah, so if there's stuff like that that we need to review before the meeting, if you can get it up to us as soon as possible, that would be helpful.
Will do.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks very much.
Yep, thanks, Rick. Thanks, Tyler. Thanks, Jen. See ya.
Bye.
You're eating.
Hi. Okay, so Jonathan is on with us and we have. Highway garage, roof replacement and animal shelter. So which one do you want to give us an update on first?
All right, I got I can do the highway garage first. So since we last met, I I reached out to the architect Gary Tarantino. And structural engineer Gary Torrello regarding the expiration dates on their proposal, as it was only like 15 days. They both provided updated proposals with a 90-day expiration date and those proposals are dated. Seven, eight and seven, three. So hopefully that gives us enough time to push these through the next few meetings. The MEP engineer been seemed to care. They said there's no expiration date and they'll just change the date when we reach out to him next. Both the architect and the structural engineer did not want to provide costs for design services yet, even if they are ballpark or ballpark costs. They want to complete the assessment first, so unfortunately we won't have the information for the board of selectmen. I also reached out to Brad and Sebby in finance to see if the sprinklers in the garage will help with some insurance savings. And they said probably not because our policy is umbrella policy. It'll be minimal saving, so just a FYI kind of thing. I uploaded all this stuff to the all the new proposals to the Google Drive. I'm not sure if you get pinged when I do that. I could send the emails if that's better. And my last thing was just how do we get on to the next board of selectmen meeting to. Keep the this project moving. This kind of question for you all.
So we would. I assume we would ask for selectmen to put us on their agenda. So I had emailed. You, you and Eric. Questioning whether we should. How much have you? Presented to or or informed the board of selectmen? They they signed it to us, so they must know. That you're in process, but is there more of a? A presentation or something that needs to be done so to them and or the board of finance? So that we can start getting into. Because we have to ask them and then they have to go to the then we then either we or they go to the all of us go to the. Board of Finance for approval.
Sure, yeah, and so Eric and I, we when this project got passed over to you, we went to the board of selectmen with. Just proposals that we had and then we gave them a brief history, not not as much of a deep dive that we gave you all last meeting. So I'd expect the board of finance should definitely get the that meet that full presentation and the board of selectmen might need a refresher. So we can we can be prepared to give that.
Sure if it needs to be as detailed as what you gave us because we're really having to know. All the pieces and parts. That are going to be needing to be done during. Construction.
Sure.
So I'm wondering. Do do we need to? I was actually questioning that, that's why.
Okay.
I can. Check in with. I'll I can email Dan and include you and Eric and whoever else and see. Can we just jump on? I mean, their their regular meetings are. First and third Tuesdays, I think. What I'm remembering, so. Their next would be the 21st. So we may, which is next week. No, it's not, it's the week after. So I'll check, I can check and see if they are. Oh, no, this 22nd, that's Tuesday. I can check and see if we can get on the agenda. And and I think what we probably shouldn't do is look at, so if the. Proposals from architect, structural, MEP. Are they change at all or they just change the end dates?
They just they just they were they were cool with the 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 cost. They just changed the date and.
So they're, yeah, those are in the in the drive, the Google Drive. We looked at them last time. And. I'm thinking maybe we should make some kind of a. Motion proposal to. Take those to the board of selectmen and the board of finance for approval, because we really can't go any further. With anything until we have those assessments, correct?
Yeah, I mean, unless we want to. I think we kind of made the agreement that we're going to stick with this plan unless we want to go with looking for new. Architects at this point, but if we want to move forward with these two guys, I think we need to get the assessments done so we can. Get a better idea what the design is going to be.
Right. I know a lot of times the board of finance wants to know what's the cost of the entire project. We don't.
Yeah, I know, I.
Until we, I mean, we've got some. Numbers that we're throwing around a while back, but. We're not going to know that until we get the assessments done.
I guess they might just question, you know, as far as going with those two people, reaching out to multiple people, that sort of thing too, right? I guess you would just need to talk to that point by. Go with these two people.
Right, so. My understanding is if it's under. Twenty thousand dollars, you don't have to.
But this likely that would still want to know that too.
Yes, well, they may ask, so we let them know that. That the process, which was already started by Jonathan and Eric. To get to where we are now. And here are these proposals. We're not going to start from scratch, I don't think, because that's going to take more time.
Yeah.
Et cetera, so.
You have to reinvent the wheel again, you know, I mean, they have to go in and recess and it take a long time.
Yeah, so it's probably best that Eric or Jonathan explain that, I guess.
Right, so I think if we go to the, it doesn't have to be all of us. I mean, those guys being anybody else wants to come as long as it's not a forum, if you all want to come. We would make it a special meeting of us with a joint meeting with the board of selectmen.
Well, yes, can we go and just not speak then at that point? Like you have to, because politics, a lot of those meetings, right?
Yes. It would be the public.
I guess, yeah, I'm just saying, yeah, that's the issue.
We'll find out.
Yeah.
He might not all want to show up anyway, so. I'll check on that. Because I think if we can go to. The next, you know, as quickly to the board of selectmen as we can. Because then we have to go to the board of finance. When's the next board of finance meeting? And they had a special meeting tonight. Downstairs, we were there.
Right.
So the board of finance will throw, you know, we'll put a special meeting out there if needed, if we really want to keep. Moving this along, but board of finance, I believe, means once a month. And they are the second Tuesday, so that's already. Gone, that was last night, but I don't know why they did special tonight, maybe because people weren't available. So we don't want to wait, well. Guests could wait till that August 12th, but that's a whitewash. Maybe they'll have a special meeting. What that kind of they have to figure that part out. We can ask. So I think that, let's see. I want to get the proposal. Oh, wait. So. I I can make a motion, but I need to. Turn my computer off. So the architect is. Which one's the architect, John?
It's Gary Tarantino.
Yeah, I read the proposal. I'm just doing because I just turned it off and the structural.
Is Gary Torrello.
And MEP is.
The general drafting and design. And funny enough, the the guy that runs that company is also a Gary.
Oh, I was hoping. Last day that runs the company. Something.
I I don't know off the top of my head. I've been, one of his staff members have been reaching out, but his signature is on all the proposals.
Torrello, is it like Gary Torrello Inc. or something or LLC?
Just a Torrello engineers.
Okay. And Tarantino is.
Gary Tarantino Architecture.
Okay. So I will make a motion that we.
Oh, and be before you make that motion, I it's one more thing I wanted to add that I forgot to mention, and I think I need to share this with everyone. I'm not sure if you've seen this, but. Our town Melanie, the town lawyer. She has she has new, she drafted. Contract and insurance requirements for our consultants.
Requirements for our consultants.
So so we, I think I should I should share that with everyone, so just so you're familiar. You know, she's had problems with some of the engineering firms that we engaged with and she didn't like their liability insurance. And things like that.
And things like that.
I'm getting a little feedback.
Yeah, we just got a bunch of feedback. I didn't really hear that.
I turned my computer off.
Can can you guys hear me?
Oh, do we know?
I made you a co-host. Maybe that's what did it, John. I made you a co-host. That might have made the feedback start.
So does that mean then these people have agreed to what Melanie the requirements are now before they could move forward?
Yeah, I I mean, at some point Melanie's going to review their contracts and give them ridiculous amounts of comments based off of my experience.
Comments based on experience.
I think. I I think it's I have a sheet they need to sign and I couldn't do it before they started, so I I just received that earlier this week and I'll I'll share it with you guys so you can see, but.
I'll share it with you guys so you can see, but.
Huh, so.
Then I guess you I don't think you want to move forward unless you can.
So I think.
Yeah.
So. I mean, she. Kind of, it was almost like she was starting from scratch. In a way with save more rather than just saying, give them an AIA document and take out the parts you don't want, put in the parts you do want. So. I I got I thinking that if we're going to ask the board of selectmen. To approve these amounts from Tarantino, Torrello and other Gary, general drafting and design. That they're going to want to know. Because of the if we take the time to go to the board of selectmen, do the presentation, say this much money, and they say, yep, let's go to the board of finance, yeah. Then when we go to go to contract with them. They're not going to.
Honor those.
Honor it or they don't.
Yeah, you really you really can't do that until you these people are working.
So. Did she say? Whatever she sent, did she have any instructions? Like if you're going to engage with somebody, you need to have them check this out first before. We approve any funding or how was that? I didn't get anything, so.
All I got was an email forwarded to me from Eric.
Forwarded to me from Eric.
And he just stopped my stopped on my desk and said, check this out. These are our new terms.
And check this out. These are our new terms.
Okay.
Well, I mean, again, there's no point if if you everything's approved in these that the Garrys don't agree to.
Yeah.
And it appears that they may be more rigorous.
Yeah.
Potentially, and they may say, no, I'm not, I'm not going to absorb that extra cost.
Yeah, or hey, I can, but I have to go that cost into the number.
Yeah, yeah.
So I'm going to have to ask about that too, so I can. Or if the email, so the email that you got was forwarded to you by Eric?
Yes.
John? Yeah.
Yes.
So you read, you see everything.
Yes.
And but we don't know exactly how these are supposed to be. That's not helpful to us. How they're supposed to be used, so we have to, you know, make sure that everybody. Knows this ahead of time when. We either ask for quotes or put out RFPs, then probably some of the terms in those contracts will have to be put in RFP if we're sending an RFP out. If we're asking if it's a smaller amount, we're just asking for some quotes. If we're just fishing around for funds that or how much is going to cost.
Maybe Melanie needs to explain exactly what this means, right?
Right, so I'll have to check into that, so I kind of.
So you're going to get a copy from.
I will.
Engineering?
No, I'm going to ask. I'm going to ask. Dan and Melanie.
I I think that's a good idea.
Or with this, we have some. Yeah, and I'll include you and Eric and.
So again, so you don't want to make the motion then?
And we could make it contingent upon.
I'm going to send that out to all the Garrys.
Um, they put the judge that.
It's two days before, right?
A day.
I thought it was two days.
Twenty-four hours, special meetings, two days, right, Kathy? Special meetings, but regular meetings that sometimes the judge doesn't get finished until Monday. It's worse like when wait until they can get everything in that they need to handle. So but it's not next week, it's the week after.
Okay.
So how about if I make a motion that we. Move forward with the proposals from. Gary Tarantino Architecture, Torrello Engineers and General Drafting and Design.
Contingent.
For the highway garage roof. Assessment studies. To take this, to pay those to the board of selectmen. For their approval. Contingent upon what we find out from the new. Contract requirements from town attorney.
Second.
Anybody else think they want to add to it or have?
No, I think it makes sense that I can know if anybody else has something.
Yeah, I hear feedback when Jonathan speaks too, but I don't know what. Yeah.
Can you can you hear feedback now?
Can you hear feedback now?
No.
I still hear it. Yeah, I'm still getting it.
That's why we don't have.
I I get Tom also. Tom gets feedback when he speaks as well.
Tom gets feedback when he speaks.
All right, let's see, and everybody's muted. My computer's off, so that shouldn't be. We might have to have these microphones checked again, because I think Jack. Moved them at some point to, and that helped with the feedback situation.
It was weird. The majority of the meeting was fine until about.
So I did a second. I already did a second, yeah.
So what did Tom say? What'd you say, Tom?
I said the majority of the meeting was fine until about 10 minutes ago.
Fine until about 10 minutes ago. Were you a computer?
No, it's when I made him a co-host all of a sudden.
But he says he's still getting feedback.
I know, but that's.
That's fine. I I think we're stuck with the feedback though. I mean, I don't think you're going to.
Well, we got it. Well, let's see if we can get finished up and.
Yeah.
Can you hear everything that we're saying or is it not coming through?
I can I can hear you guys fine, but when I speak, I feel like you can't hear me.
But when I speak, I feel like you can't hear me.
So we can hear you fine, so you're here, so you hear us, we hear you, but when you talk, you all get feedback.
I hear myself like three times, yeah.
I hear myself like three times, yeah.
Yeah, it's it's just a bad echo.
Yeah, it's just a bad echo.
I I guess, Tom, are you are you good? We there's a. A second to the Nancy's motion.
Yes. Yeah.
I guess.
So you made a second, right?
Yep.
So Jeff seconded my motion. And I don't know if we need to add anything to it or. If it sounds complete enough. Maybe I'll add to it something like we'll go to the next board of selectmen meet, we'll bring this to the next board of selectmen meeting. Listen to the recording and we'll figure it out. Okay. So any other input from Tom or? Okay, so any other input from Tom or Dave Olson? Or anybody here on that? We're good. All in favor?
Yeah.
Aye.
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 Favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, done. Thank you. All right, so. I'll have to look into. If I need to, I can send the contracts around to everybody to look at if you're getting any input.
We're saving it in the shared drive.
Yeah. So. And there's nothing else on the garage roof that we can do right now except. Get that moving forward because we need to approve those, have. The funds approved. So we go ahead and do what we, what we need to do. Yeah. So anything else on the highway garage, John?
No, that's all.
That's all.
Um, and is there anything on the animal shelter?
A couple of things. Um, so first.
Things, um, so first.
On June 30th, the Connecticut Department of Agriculture inspected our facility.
Culture inspected our facility.
The inspecting officer made it clear that we are not really rectifying our violations. There will be new requirements in 2029.
New requirements in 2029.
So the grandfather clause that we're currently operating under will no longer apply by 2029. So we either need to rebuild or repair to current standards by 2029. That's kind of our. Deadline we kind of received by the. Department of Ag.
Department of Ag.
So that's fresh.
So that's fresh.
And aside from that, the only other thing I have to the animal shelter is. Moving forward with a, a site needs assessment potentially.
Site assessment potentially.
Uh, I, I'm not sure if that's something that we all thought about yet, if we want to. But the current site might not be the best place.
Might not be the best place.
So. Um. At, at our last meeting, we talked about how we did a space needs assessment study for the police station when we were starting to work on that. And then. Erica, John asked. To look at. What, what was, what went into that and what came out of it? And. I had a copy of it and there's a copy in the building somewhere, but nobody could find it. But I was away last week. So when I got back, I brought. That over and the process basically was an RFP was. Sent out. Saying what we needed. We needed the space needs and site assessment. And then, uh, the public site building commission that we've received, received three or four or five. I wasn't there yet. I just got an appointment, appointed when. They were finishing up the needs assessment or they had already chosen somebody. So they had, you know, our responses to our P. Chose. Kentucky U's Architects to do. The assessment. And then they did the whole process. And basically their process was to go around interview. Everybody in the police department and find out whether they needed space, et cetera. Came up with a. Some general idea like a schematic of this is how big the building needs to be. And then they also had included in their. Proposal that they would, uh, review three sites in town for us. We only ended up coming up with two to review. And then all that stuff went into a binder and it was given to the board selectmen once it was completed and. Um, from there. So. I ended up with one of the binders and had, had an extra one that I left here and who knows where it is. So if that, John, it seems to me that you've started that process yourself. For the building itself, but I think for the space, like the site. Is where we could probably really use. Expertise that. We don't all have.
Yes, and looking at the, um, the police department report that you showed, brought to my desk. Building seemed to get a lot of attention and the site was a very small component of that report. And I think for the animal shelter, it might be opposite.
I think for the animal shelter.
And the finding appropriate site basket.
Finding.
Architectural needs are pretty.
Architectural needs are pretty.
Pretty. Pretty cut and dry based off of, you know, we need a whole.
Dry based off.
We need 12 kennels, we need office space.
Need 12 kennels.
The police department is pretty complex for architectural.
The police department is pretty complex for architectural.
Right.
Yeah, I would agree. It's just a site, right? I mean, who else would you interview other than the, uh, the animal control officer?
Yeah.
Know. Yeah, yeah, you're right. Yeah, the regulations, the requirements for the department of which agriculture, something has their own requirements.
So with the, the new information that you got from the Department of Agriculture, they're not shutting you down. They're just saying you've got to. Get everything completed, either rebuild or repair by 2029. But here's some new stuff you have to take into consideration. Yeah, okay. And the sum of it, like space, outside space, like a site. Needs of a site, like how big the site needs to be, et cetera.
Um, I, I, I think Kathy, I think.
I think.
The email you forwarded me, the report wasn't attached to it, but I think there is some outdoor.
I think there is.
Space that's required.
Dog run space that's required.
Okay, yeah. Right, right.
Maybe a size or anything.
Or increase the footprint. You're not just inside the building. You have to be, each kennel has to have it inside and outside.
Yeah, which is kind of what we're thinking too, though, Eric.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, that was based on the regulations. They have to be able to lock. The dog out while they clean the inside and lock the dog in while they clean the outside.
So in 2029 though, if this isn't done, then do they find the town or shut it down? I mean, really that's kind of. You're no longer grandfathered though, isn't that the deadline?
That's a good point. Kathy, do you, do you have any?
I don't know exactly what they would do, but I would assume they would, you know, find you or, or shut you down.
Yeah.
But if you're in the process, they probably will.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So. So just overall, it seems like, um. That, that with both, with the highway garage roof and the animal shelter. Seems to me that's just, this is my opinion. I think each, each of us and Johnny should give some input too with that, that the highway garage roof. Is kind of a little bit more. Kind of pertinent yet going. And then the animal shelter's got to kind of be right in there, but not as immediate, urgent, immediate as the highway garage roof. Yet we're going to have to come up with at some point. Some figures. To be able to, uh. You know, both for finance and for the selectmen looking at it saying. Here's what this is going to cost. Here's what this is going to cost. And then they've got to accomplish funding, et cetera. And it's a.
I guess, does, does anybody give the board of finance like a heads up as they're planning out their expenditures and all that stuff next couple of years that these projects are, are looming? Especially the highway garage, that the condition as well as this deadline possibly animal shelter?
I would think so.
Yes, Eric, Eric has a capital projects list that he shares with.
The board of finance every year.
Very loose list, but it is some, it, they, these projects have been, they've seen them.
These projects, they've seen them for a while.
Okay, and they, they know they're, they know they're.
But I guess they, they, they have the priority of those projects, I guess, right? I mean, especially this animal, the animal shelter, I mean, that seems to be like it's a. You know.
Well, the questions that they ask, I was just at one about an hour or so ago. So one of the proposals was for a street that was flooded in the August storm last year. So it's for drainage. And, uh, so the general question is, there was, the board of selectmen said, uh, to approve a study not to exceed $20,000. For the whole area of all the drainage. And then one member of the board said, uh, and they all voted on it and they said, yes, but. She asked a question, okay, so what does this lead to? So you have an assessment. And it may say, well, you got to, you know, spend a million dollars or something. Is that in the funding and all that? So those are the questions I think that they ask.
Yeah, so that's kind of my.
Right, so down the road, so we do this one, there's five other street areas. So what does that really mean? You know, then do we have to have a bond issue and all? So like, so that was some of the questions out that they.
Yes.
Came up with, you know.
Okay, yeah. So, uh. Back to the animal shelter, we need a site assessment. Would that be? Somebody like SLR? Could we get? Or do we have to go out and get a couple of proposals and pick one? I don't know. Is it's going to be that expensive?
Yeah, I don't think it will be. I have a list of like five or six firms that we could approach. I'll share that with everyone.
I'll share that with everyone.
Okay.
Like SLR, Ty and Bond, CCA, Westman, Samson. Folks that have offices in Connecticut.
Offices in Connecticut.
So you would have to share also with them, uh, available town land plots that potential, right?
Sure, yeah.
Have to go out.
And that was one of the questions that Eric and I were kind of toying with. Do we want to just unleash a firm? Just lines and they can, they go through all our property and find what's best.
Through our property.
Do you want to have a, a shortlist of properties that we let them look at?
Shortlist of properties.
That we vet first based off of obvious conditions.
That first based off of obvious conditions, like.
I mean, I, I would think a shortlist just because someone fall out of the project right away that just don't, you know.
Sure, yeah.
That would be my opinion, you know.
I would say a shortlist, yeah.
Plus the cost might be less too, if they're looking at, I don't know, four properties versus.
Makes up the list.
Oh, right. So. John, do you have, have you put together any sort of, or do you have access? Like a list of town properties or?
Yes, I mean, I can, I can easily get. But a good starting point, uh, well dated, the one from the police.
Well, dated.
That you shared with me. There's a really good list of properties.
There's a really good list of properties.
Is it? So it's in there. Okay. Cause I know we spent some time, we meeting the commission. It was two people on the commission. Um, that went to the assessor's office and sat there and. Cause at, at that time it was hard. Even the assessor said. I can't generate a list of all town properties. You got to kind of, there, there was a process you had to go through to find them. And they did make a list and I'm sure there may be some others.
Yeah.
That have been added, but if we look at some of them, it's interesting because it was like a several page. A lot of, because there's a. Little triangle at the end of this street and that's a town property that.
Yeah.
Whoever developed the street gave the town.
The police station one makes sense because some of them would fall out like any of the.
It has the acreage.
Like the front, you know, stuff that's open, you know, granted open space like.
Yeah. For the police department, the, the need, the, the need assessment for the building and parking and all that was, was about two acres. So anything. Lower than two acres was instantly scratched.
Lower than two acres was instantly scratched.
Yeah, yep. Cause some of them are like, you know, point zero three acres.
I would argue though, for the, uh, the animal shelter, you, you probably get away with an acre, right? Like you need, you wouldn't need two acres necessarily.
Well, what is the square footage of the concept plans that you guys came up with? I saw you need a minimal site for that.
I, I didn't take up, take off like what the parking and all that stuff would be, but the building I think is like maybe.
That stuff would be, but the building I think is like maybe.
Four thousand square foot footprint with the garage.
Thirty by sixty or forty by.
Yeah, it was, uh.
Yeah, I think it was forty-six hundred feet.
Yeah, I think it was forty-six hundred feet.
It was eighty-six by forty approximately. And then there's parking and, and the dog walk that you need.
Yeah.
So are there, um, in the new? Stuff that came through from the Department of Agriculture, are there new? Or are they the same sort of like, uh? This size building needs this much space, parking, et cetera. Or is that just left up to looking coach or something?
Yeah, I guess it'd be building it. Whatever planning and zoning requires, right?
Yeah. So many spaces.
Well, that's where the civil engineer is going to figure all that stuff.
That's where the civil engineer is going to figure all that stuff.
Yeah, yep. And if SLR has civil engineers, there's.
Yeah, they're going to have parking.
So I guess the, the question is, is, yeah, is the list of properties, right? So like you said, kind of whittle down a list of properties, then get something to, um. Into the next step to get that sort of assessment done. I guess the only thing with that police station list, uh, you said it's two acres and more, you know, two acres and greater.
Oh, it's the whole list. It's.
Oh, it's the whole list. Okay.
I think it's the whole list, isn't it?
Well, there's two lists. There's, there's one list that's all the town property and then there's like the. Shortlist that's under two acres.
The shortlist that's under two acres.
Sorry, over, uh, two acres or over.
Or sorry, over, uh, two acres or over, um.
So under two acres and under would be probably, yeah.
I think so, yeah. And, and it's like, uh, I didn't, I didn't see you said it, but a lot of the property, like you said, is the front preserve.
On the property, it's the front preserve.
Baseball fields. So some of this stuff is just dropping off.
Some of this stuff is just dropping off regardless.
Okay, so that's good that it's in the binder because I was going to go look through old files to find it, but if it's in there. And I don't have electronic copies of any of that because we didn't have that back then.
I'll, I'll get it scanned and I'll upload it to the drive.
Yeah, you can, yeah, scan it and put it in the shared drive. We'll go looking at it and see what we can, we'll, we'll have to do some sort of, um. Not that we need to put an RFP out, but we'll need to do some sort of a. General. Explanation or description of what we're looking for. To be able to go to wherever we go to. We go to three different, ask for proposals, um. And that'll be another, go to the word selectmen, go to the word finance to get money.
We can essentially. Put out an RFP before we have all our properties selected, correct?
Have all our properties selected, correct?
Well, we could if we, if we want to put out an RFP and somebody's got to write it and does that. Cause we shouldn't. We have, but we shouldn't. Usually RFPs go, um. Are written sometimes by owner's representative if you hire one of those. Or, and with input from finance because they have their foil plate stuff they put in and, uh. And I think Melanie might. Review it too. Because you're needing to ask for. We know what we need to ask for, but then there's all. The other language that kind of has to go through it. So I. Let's get that list and start, um, checking that out. And see what we need to do about getting proposed. Cause we want to have specific things we're asking them to do. Cause if you have, you know, if we have that. Sort of schematic design of a building. And say, this is what we need. They should be able to go whoever's putting a proposal together to. You know, figure out what we need. Zoning wise for parking and. Whatever else. A dumpster, a, you know, sometimes they want a dumpster on a pad, sometimes. So. And then also what, what are we doing? Where, where are the properties located? Cause are we going to be able to hook up to town water sewer or? There's something else that needs to be done depending on where the properties are located. So, yeah.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Oh, they're finding properties.
Yeah, sorry. But for the record, we're looking at properties, yeah.
Okay, so you'll get that list. Into the shared drive and we'll go from there and I'll check on some. Uh, who's going to write up something? If we're not going to actually do an RFP and again. If it's asking for some proposals. How do we send, how do we do that?
Yeah, that could, that can be.
Sort of a.
Eric and I went through that process for another project and.
Process.
It seems easy enough to reach out to firm and get proposals.
It seems easy to reach out to firm and get proposals.
We had a few dog and pony shows with the firm presenting their.
The, you know, the firm presenting.
They're all about and all this stuff and.
What they're all about.
Aside from the proposal, it was, it was a lot, a lot more time than just getting proposals.
Time.
So I don't know if RFP makes more sense or.
I don't know if RFP makes more sense or just reaching out to a few firms.
What, what, I'm not sure what you all think. Um, I mean, I, I don't think this will be over 50 grand.
I mean, I, I don't think this will be over 50 grand.
So we can find a couple, two or three.
Two or three.
Yeah, ask a couple of people for proposals. But we would need to have some sort of a, like a bullet list or whatever, what we're expecting. Them to look at and review and what the needs are. And again, I don't know if that's. I. If it's easier to put out an RFP, we can do that too.
So Jonathan, you said that. So Jonathan, you said that you reached out to like Danbury and and a few other towns to get ideas for the what an animal shelter plan is. Did you, do, do you know people in the, in like Danbury, what firms that they use?
Yep, he had that in a list.
Yeah.
Be a shortlist, because they've done it already. So why reinvent the wheel? I mean, if they did something in Danbury, now it's easy, because they did it over at the landfill, you know, they they had site over there, but I'm just saying as sources that somebody did that already.
Well, they have, so he, Jonathan gave us a list of the architect, architectural firms that they used. That Danbury and Monroe and a couple others used, we had that list. But not, right now, what we're looking to do is locate a site first. Or do we ask for the whole package? I think we ask first, we we want to narrow down a site first. I don't know, what do you think?
Yeah. Well, the site will take the building, how you're gonna lay it out too.
Yeah, yeah. An L shape, something, yeah, yeah. I think if we could identify a site first, that I think would.
Yeah, I think it's, yeah.
Or sites, right?
I mean, keep the current site in the mix. Because if that works. I don't think it will.
Now, somebody said the, where the old police department was, now there may be some wetlands issue.
I think they have a plan for that.
That spoken for or any kind of.
Oh, they're looking into some things.
Loosely.
Oh, okay.
But I don't know who's doing the looking into.
But again, maybe you put that on the list, right? I mean.
Yeah.
That's right, it doesn't.
Well, the worst thing to say is no.
Yeah.
So is an RFP just more of a formal way to ask for a proposal?
A formal way to ask for a proposal?
Yes.
Okay, and you have to do that if you think it's gonna be.
Do that if you think it's gonna be.
Over fifty thousand?
Over fifty thousand?
Yes.
Okay, I got it.
That's my understanding.
I got it.
Yeah.
And the other thing with the RFP that it does too, is it kind of creates a level playing field, these, everyone seeing the same stuff.
These, everyone seeing the same stuff.
When, when you're engaging with firms, particularly, you might send them stuff and they're like, oh, I got a quick call, and now you're talking to them. Call and you tell them something, they didn't tell another firm, it just becomes it can become a little messy, especially if we have many more than one person doing this.
Especially if we have many more than one person doing this.
Right.
But since it's not gonna be that expensive, I don't know if that's.
Expensive, I don't know if that's necessarily a big deal.
So I would think that it, if we could approach it the same way, with an RFP put the RFP out there, if you have a if you have a site or something or a building, you have to do a walkthrough, they come. Any questions that are asked the answers have to be set, sent to all people who have said they're gonna put a proposal in. So that everybody gets the same information, that's what Jonathan was saying. You can't have this person get some information that that person doesn't have, because then your proposals aren't gonna be equal either. So, if if we don't do an RFP, I would say we at least put together some sort of document that has something so that you say, this is what we need.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, essentially, that's a RFP stuff, right?
Yeah.
The tab is, don't they have a procurement department here?
Yes, we do.
Well, they don't do things like this, or?
They should. Does he?
Isn't that is that what they do all the time?
As well, should be, but the uh some procurement people, wait, 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 that did oh, up to that, so.
So Sam is the first?
He's the purchasing.
Do they help with that?
Probably, yeah.
Okay, yeah. Have you you and, you and Eric haven't talked to Sam about any proposals or RFPs or anything? John?
Um, no, not yet, right when I started with the town, they were wrapping up.
Started, they were wrapping up.
They wrapped up a RFP they put out for some sidewalks, but I haven't, I didn't get involved with it.
Sidewalks, but I didn't get involved with it.
Okay.
Another thought I had, um, I'm not sure if we can do a um.
Not sure if we can do a um.
Um, what would it be called? Um, invitation to bid, we can pick a few firms.
Invitation to bid.
We can invite them to bid on this project, I I know it's very small.
Projects. Small.
Yeah.
But it might uh
But it might uh.
Create like a level playing field.
Create like a level playing field, we do something like that.
Right, and the invitation to bid similar to an RFP would would have some specifics about what we need and what we're looking for, et cetera. So then it would be, it's a written document, everybody gets the same thing. And if questions are asked, then you've got to, so whoever is the person that's gonna answer the questions has to make sure they go out to other people. But if you do an invitation to bids.
Exactly.
Do you put it out on like state, some state list?
How do you post that? Online or?
Yeah, there's a state.
Oh, there's a state.
Something.
Again, I would think this person for the town would know.
DAS, that's right, I I was saying DSS, that's not right. It goes on. Plus, you can also, you put it up on the DAS, but you can also, if you've worked with certain firms before, or you can set the invitation to bid or the RFP, whichever it is, to those specific people and say we're looking at doing this, you guys wanna look into it, they maybe do, and maybe they don't. We should also make sure that there's like uh we put together a document and then a deadline, so. So I think we can check with Sam too and find out. Can they just go ahead and, you know, if we give them what we need then maybe Sam can put something together. So I can check on that. Sam, Sam Flynn, he's the purchasing agent. Okay, yeah. Okay. So, John's gonna put the property list up that's from the police station, but if there's others that we, town has acquired, I other than nature preserves.
Yeah, I I have access to a spreadsheet of properties in town, and I can filter it by town owned property, so I can, I can export a a recent town list.
A recent town list.
Okay. And then also.
Yeah, and and that's maybe sort by the ones that you think would be kind of viable, right? I mean you you're probably more familiar with some, with those properties than some of us here.
Sure, yeah, I'll I'll highlight, I'll I'll make the ones that are contenders.
Yeah.
At least my eyes know.
Yeah, at least half of them are are landlocked.
Uh, with no access.
Yeah, 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 I know a couple of that stuff.
So you need a, we need to buy a helicopter to get.
Or buy the property next month.
Dog shoots, you need.
There you go.
Jonathan, did you say you could ping us when you post something to the um Yeah, what, it it's just writing everyone's personal email address.
Personal email address, that's the preferred method.
Okay, I think that'd be good.
I think that'd be good. Yeah.
Okay, yeah.
Let him drop something in these folders to let everybody know.
Yeah, sure.
That was.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, uh, anything else, John, that you wanted to cover tonight, or anybody here need anything? You can check into.
That's all I have.
Okay, great, thanks.
Have a good night, Jonathan.
Yeah, thank you guys.
Thank you, thank you.
Yeah, thank you guys.
Yep.
Now, what about the uh, the locker room? That doesn't include them?
No.
Okay.
That was something that we were assigned a while ago, and I've sent out emails asking for help, updates.
I think that's getting pushed. Further down, these other projects that are coming up that are.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, and at the same time, if we could, if we could put a set of client plans together and then grant comes along, you know, we want to be ready for that, so I did email Dan and Rachel, I haven't heard anything back, I emailed Jay at BMP and said you know, like, we were asking, what, what do we get for ninety five thousand dollars, and I haven't gotten a reply, so can ask again.
Spent through the summer, too, probably got a lot of people going on vacations, things like that.
There's that, plus I think they got really, because it, you know, BMP got really busy. It's it's interesting that this whole state contract list thing, because we were going through that hole with Gordian and everybody. Now we have a new Gordian person, it'll find that person's email. That the only contractor I think for the whole southern part of Connecticut is BMP. So you would think that if this whole state contract way of dealing with stuff is catching on and but lots of people are doing, that they might try to get another one or two as well. Well, you've given them a couple of tasks for little things. Are they doing the, do they do the task courts?
Um, they sure they did.
Yep.
Yeah.
And they're, are they gonna do Parloa? Well, I don't know, it might be. I'll try emailing Jay again. But I think you're right, David, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah. He's up deadlines.
Yeah.
And if we had a set of plans and their grant came along, it would be great to be able to use them to jump into. But again you do a set of plans, if you're not getting into it for three years, you gotta pay money to get it up.
And even the grant, I mean, the grant could be, you know, the town has to match something too, right?
There's that.
Yeah.
As I said, with the uh, steep grant that we applied for a couple of years ago what was found out, in fact, that all the towns that got grants had already put money, like, the towns had already approved some chunk of money to be a part of whatever they were doing.
I wonder if the grants for like the animal shelter, you know, the highway garage project.
Your shelter, the best I got is ASPCA.
But, but animal shelter could be a steep grant too, but we don't know, we don't, we don't know when those are gonna be put out for, you know, you can apply for a grant, because it's couple of different town employees that keep track of that, would get that information, so. All right.
Second.
All favor, uh, opposed, done.
Tom.
Thanks, Dave, thanks, Tom.
Tom, did the, the feedback? Once Jonathan left?
Check one, two, check.
Check one, two, check one, two.
How's the feedback?
It's still there, it's still there.
It's still there?
All right.
It seems to only be when I zoom in.
It's only be when I zoom in.
Yeah.
So it's your fault.
You have to be dead there, son, that's.
We want you here.
Yeah, we're voting next time.
Yeah, we're gonna elect you the chair. Uh-oh, he's gonna come back.